Found at the bottom of your Zoom window in the Q and A we would ask that you type your name, address, subject of interest, and whether you have discussed this item prior to the meeting with either a district administrator or President Howery. After submitting that information, I would then transfer you over to speak to the board.
I do not have anyone registering to vote or to, excuse me, registering to speak to the board.
Thank you Angie. So we will move on to the school board reports. District administrators report first.
Well, you see, you see obviously the meetings coming up on December 15th, December, November 15th, December 6th, and December 20th, and January 17th, and today. You should have also gotten if notification about there's registration open for the school board convention, which is the third week in January. So I know that I have already registered. I know that Craig has registered. If any of you would like to go for anything, if you let Angie know, she will make sure.
What day is it? January what?
I think it's like the 17th.
Yes.
And typically it's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah. With Friday. With Friday being kind of a winding down day, but the, but, but the delegates convention.
It's Wednesday morning.
Is Wednesday morning. Now, I've always attended that. So if you, there's, there's probably no reason for both of us to go to that. I've always been the delegate, so.
Yeah, I can't be the delegate anyway. It has to be a board member.
Yes, that's right. Okay, that's fine.
January 19th through the 21st.
19th through the 21st.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we just let Angie.
We'll discuss the strategic planning process then.
All right. The one thing I want to bring up tonight that I'd actually, is for discussion, is that we're going to be working on two things throughout this year. One, of course, is the superintendent search process, which we're going to talk about a little bit later. And the second is our five-year strategic planning process. We're already getting some information on that from the surveys and all that. And then with strategic planning, I think the thought was, is that we would get the information, then we'd put it on hold until a superintendent was hired so that that individual could be a part of the process, which we'd start later on. What I am asking, if there's a consensus among the board, is that if we can all agree that one of the major pillars, is what I'll call it for lack of a better term, is equity, then what I'd like to do is start working on the equity portion now, rather than waiting until potentially February. One is we have a lot of things that deal with equity that are going on. You have your equity resolution, which you passed, you know, during the last school year. We also have our grant with natural circles of support. We also have the, we are many, united against hate, which we're actually having a presentation that we are hosting in January. We also have our culture responsive teaching that we're doing for our professional development. And I just think, rather than trying to wait until February to really start writing this, that we have so many pieces going on that it might be advantageous if we can start writing that section earlier instead of waiting. And then it can serve as a template for the other things that we determine are going to be the major pillars. It's just we have so many things that I just don't want to end up waiting until February to start creating the things. Because my fear is that we have so many good things going on, but if we don't find a way to unite them, that we may pull in opposite directions. And it would just assume taking all of the initiatives we have to make sure we're pulling in one direction. So they're all working towards a common purpose rather than working at cross purposes. So if everyone felt that this, yes, will probably be one of the pillars, then what I'll do is I'll start working with administrative team and yourselves to start creating what, you know, what this one pillar would, should look like in a strategic plan.
Christine, could I ask how, do you have, have any, any feel as, as to that kind of strategy moving forward? You're, you're blessed with an equity background that maybe none of us have.
Thank you, Craig. I think, well, my first reaction is I love the idea of using whatever topic we decide on right now as.
A model or template to keep building on. I think that's a wonderful idea because we can get all of the aspects of it that we want when we're thinking about strategic planning, including outcomes and any other things that might go into it. So I really like that idea. I think the question that Dr. Anderson is asking all of us is whether or not equity has appeared in a number of different ways, and in enough ways that we feel like it will be part of our strategic plan. So speaking for myself, I definitely feel that way. I, I heard it in the three meetings that I was able to attend. Unfortunately, I could not attend the high school one I was out of town. But I, I feel like it has emerged and it will emerge. So when I look at it that way, certainly I would agree with it. From my equity lens, as being part of a couple of those, I also agree with Dr. Anderson's thoughts that if we don't get more aligned, we're going to be working at cross purposes. So generally, I, I like, I like the idea, but of course, I'm one of five, so.
No, that's, that's exactly what I asked for. Thank you very much, Christine. Anybody else want to add on here?
Well, I think we are, you know, active in it. We're all in the growing stage of it. But I think it's all, it's all coming down and then, you know, it could be very well a good thing to tackle right now as we get her up front. It's, it's going to be a solid issue to go forward on.
I mean, in, in reading the comments that come across, it's just, you know, it comes across frequently enough, and it's been in our discussions frequently enough, that I can't see any five-year plan that you'd create in which it does not exist.
Exactly.
Yeah. No, that, I, I think that doesn't, certainly doesn't need to be said. If, I, I would approach it this way, I guess, unless someone has a reason not to do it, I would say that's a sound strategy. And, and I think we probably all agree that equity is going to be one of our pillars, whether it be three of them, or five of them, or whatever it's going to be. So I have no issue with it.
Then what I will do, since there seems to be consensus, is that I'll try to draft how we're going to approach working on this pillar and present it at the November 15th board meeting. And if you think that the process that I'm describing makes sense, then we'll go forward. And if you'd like to tweak the process, we'll tweak it and then, you know, we'll start. And obviously, I'm sure that there'll be modifications along the way, but at least you'll have an idea of, here's how we're going to approach this one aspect. And then we should learn from that as we get to the other ones later on in the school year.
Agreed.
I think it's, it's an obvious choice.
Yep, agreed. Okay, moving on. Superintendent search.
All right. Time is moving a lot, you know. You always think you have a lot more time than you do. And in this case, it's, it's probably not true, is that there's already superintendents' vacancies being posted right now.
You bet.
So two of the things that I'd like to deal with tonight are, one, is we create the application to put online, is that I think it's important to have some essay questions. So what I did is I put out a series. Bruce added a couple. I sent the revised sheet to you later on. And my belief is that five is probably a reasonable number to ask an applicant to fill out. But I wanted to make sure that we put in the questions that are going to help you make the decision on how we can basically, you know, reduce the number of applicants down to a number that you think are worthy for an interview. And the essay questions do that. So if you know the type, the questions that really you would like responses to, you can give those to me. If you don't, I'm not looking that you have to give them to me tonight, but I would ask that over the next week, that you look at the sample questions, and if you have other questions that you think would be better, or if you want to combine some, that you get those to me so that at the end of the week, or the beginning of next week, I can send those out so that when we get to the 15th, at our next board meeting, there's some common agreement about the ones that you would like, and then I can put those into an application so that we can post that portion after our meeting on the 15th. And like I said, I think five is a reasonable number to ask. And the whole reason to put these down are so when you look at the various applicants, they can help you determine which ones you think, you know, may deserve an interview.
Well, I certainly agree, Dr. Anderson, that time does fly, and time is getting short. I do believe that we're in a good place in the process, though.
Oh, yeah.
I think we're going to be all right in terms of, the only, the only, you know, bothersome thing is that you're absolutely correct also in that there are superintendent's positions being filled as we speak. You know, I, I think we're all aware that after, after COVID, that there were going to be a lot of vacancies, and there was going to be a lot of activity. I still trust in the reputation of the McFarland District to get top-flight applicants.
Right. And you're in the prime period. I mean, the prime period will be between.
Christine had a, had a comment. Go ahead, Christine.
Okay, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no.
No.
And I can't see if other hands are raised, so, thank you. I, I'm happy to share or give you, I, I did write down the ones that I liked. Dr. Anderson, do you give them guidance, though, on, on, not, in the applications, you say something like, please respond to these questions and give maybe a word count or something? The reason why I ask is I could see us generating questions that would be really hard to answer in a short count. At the same time, if they go on for pages and pages, we're not going to be able to do any application due justice. So do you normally say, you know, answer this in two paragraphs or, or something like that, just so that we can, we can kind of fine tune our questions to meet that and make sure we're not reading tomes of paper here?
Yes, I've done it both ways, depending on, you know, the type of question. Sometimes I put a character count, but in other cases, basically put the descriptors that it has to be one page or less. And then, you know, like 12 font, you know, with margins. So it has to be within one page per question. Because that should give enough to give a complete answer, and yet it's not overwhelming. Now, you will see the applicants as if, once we get to the posting process, they will, as a person applies, and their, their documents come online, you'll be able to see them. So you'll be able to keep up with, you know, you don't have to wait till the end to read them. I never wait till the end. I read them as they come in and make little notes to myself. So you'll be able to do that. Because if you do wait till the end, and you have, my belief is you'll probably get about 25 applicants, and then you try to read all of it, it can be a little, oh, you know. If you read them as they come in, it's much more manageable. If you want, you can either give me the ones now, or you can, you can send them to me electronically, whichever is going to be easiest for you. Okay?
So, do you, I guess if we all just individually send you the ones, if we're shooting for five, we should probably talk about any that we see right now that are very important to us, because otherwise, we're all just emailing him, and we might have a different five that are important. So, you know, I think, to me, when I was reading over some of these, I think the morale question is an important one personally right now.
Yeah, and I spelt that wrong. I made sure they had an E at the end, so.
So the how do you gauge morale of a district, and what methods have you used to improve morale for your past positions? I know that that's a problem here right now. And so I think that when we're interviewing these candidates, you want somebody who has experience with that, who can give examples of what they've done to help other districts. So to me, that's an important one. You know, the equity question, I think, is an important one because that's a, it's something that comes up very frequently. So my personal opinion is that should be on there. Is there, do you guys want me to keep talking, or is there any that you guys?
No, no, you go ahead. The only thing, I, I don't see the two that I sent you on this list.
If you go to.
I think I have to get.
Yeah. I mean, if you have them, they should be 17 and 18, because I have my ear in mind.
Okay, I go up to 16.
I don't have them either.
He sent it out today.
Oh.
At 1:45.
Okay. And I looked at that, I didn't see it there either. So let me minimize it.
I actually like six as well.
There's a whole bunch of them I like.
Because that's a piece that.
Now, remember, is that if there, you can use other, you can use some of these other questions as part of your interview. So it's, you know, it's, it's not that if you don't pick it, it goes to, you know, the question can't be used. What it simply means is that these are some that they're going to give a written answer to, and then later on, when you have your in-person interviews.
Oh, God.
Some of these questions can be in-person.
I, I like the idea of a word count, but I also think that, that we should at least be wary when we're choosing these questions. And I, I think I'm probably repeating exactly what Kate said, but bear with me. I, I just think that we can't set them up for failure in that, by giving them questions that can become very involved, complex, detailed. Maybe those are things that we should ask during the interview. But, you know, if it's, I don't even know, is a thousand words a lot, you know, for? Christine?
Oh, yeah, two pages, yeah.
Well, it would seem to me you want, if, if you want long, detailed, that should be an essay. They have a chance to do some research on it.
True.
I don't know if you want someone to be sitting down and you're trying to, you know, have them, and how do they do that?
Yeah, that's true as well.
So I think, you know, I, I would put some limits. I think there's nothing wrong with that. That makes, that shows their, can they become concise? Can they, you know, that's a skill that they, we, they need to demonstrate.
Yeah.
And at the same time, I think, you know, almost kind of going through this, this idea that, that's, what are ones would be really good for an interview, and which ones would be better for the essay?
Christine?
Right. What I'm hearing Dr. Anderson say, though, is that this is part of our application. So these are actually screening questions.
Right.
So we need to pick five, and I, I was, Kate, you and I were really very similar in what we were chosen already. But we need to think about these as ones that if they answered them in a way in which they, it was not aligned with what we're looking for, that we would not move them forward. So I think we need to look at it that way. And, and then, you know, as both Bruce and Dr. Anderson said, we can ask, we can ask probably 16 or 18 or whatever we have at some point in the, in the, in the interview, but these are screen, like, these are ones that would cut somebody from moving on in the, in the process. Is my understanding of this, is that true?
That's an excellent take.
That's why that I use them is because they do help in the sorting process.
So like number eight, for example, what do you know about the McFarland School District, and what drew you to apply to our school district?
Yep.
That's one I feel like we could use as an interview question.
I agree.
Sure.
Totally agree.
There was another one.
One, yeah.
Oh, what do you guys think about the curriculum development one? Do you think that's more of an interview question or an application question?
Which number is that, Kate?
That's number three.
Number three, oh. Your expertise and experience with the area of curriculum development.
Because to me, I'm like, if they don't really have any experience in that, is that, like Christine said, that's somebody who's either going to come through to an interview or not.
Yeah.
I don't know how important, I mean, I, I want you guys to tell me what you think.
Well, Melissa fortunately has a large skill in, you know, as I've mentioned in the past, is that you are not going to find a person who is an expert in all this. In fact, if I was going to tell you of the areas of my own strength and weakness, curriculum would not be my strength. I mean, I understand it, I've led curriculum processes, but if I had to rate on the things that I'm, you know, the most skilled at, that would not yet. But that's why I usually have surrounded myself with people who are competent in that.
Exactly.
One question I think you should strongly consider, because I do think it's important, is number 13. And that's the board district administrator relationship, because that truly is what you will deal with all the time. And I think it's, it's useful to find out.
Yeah.
How do the applicants, I mean, how do they view, if they're already a superintendent administrator, what is their current relationship? What are the current things that they do? So you have an idea.
And, and attending national and state conventions, it's never more apparent than there are almost as many board, community, administration, you know, there are almost as many different kinds of relationship as there are boards and communities. different kinds of relationship as there are boards and communities and administrators. You, you find that in many school districts throughout the country, what I found was that the relationship between the board and whether it be a teachers' union or a bargaining group or whatever they may be called, is very adversarial. You know, and they go into it assuming it's going to be an adversarial, uh, negotiation or whatever they're going into. And we've never, in this district that I'm aware of, I know Ireland's been here 30 years. Bruce, you were here 35 or 40, involved in the union. And I don't know that we've ever gone into any sort of discussion or negotiation assuming it was going to be adversarial. Which makes us very different from a lot of districts around the country. Angie? Christine?
I'll lower my hands, it's clear. This is why I think I'll go back to my thought from our last meeting, which is to start thinking about how we're going to evaluate the candidates. Because if we know kind of the minimum standards, or not the standards, the minimum of what they should be able to do or what they've done, we were going to be more able to make these types of decisions. So, if we say, you know, like, take the equity one, that we, we really need somebody who's strong in equity, who's coming in with a background in equity, we know that should be one of our questions then. So, part of my struggle is figuring out what, you know, what are we really looking for? You know, right now, I just feel like we're, we're casting a net and taking any, any, any fish, if I can use that. When I feel like we're, you know, what, what, what are we looking for in a person? So, I just want to go back to the idea that we might think about creating some kind of a rubric or something that we can use to evaluate, you know, the responses and the candidates to know that they are going to match what we're looking for.
And I have reached out to all my colleagues if anyone has used a rubric in the past. And at this point, I will admit I'm striking out because none of my colleagues have used a rubric for either their boards for hiring a superintendent or hiring administrators. It doesn't mean we can't create one. It's just that it's something I didn't have experience with and none of my colleagues.
Yeah, and maybe that, maybe we could, you know, maybe the language is, we're getting caught up in the word rubric. I think what I'm looking for is, you know, what are the essential qualities and so on that we're looking for in this person? And then how can we ask questions and get responses? And look at their resumes in a way that I can point, I can pull out what we're looking for more, more able, more easily. And the first word that came to mind was rubric because it, because it isn't an evaluation or assessment tool. So, I, I just would like us to continue to have that conversation about what, you know, what are the things that we're going to be looking for that? And, and I do feel like part of that is what we're hearing from staff and we just haven't heard it from everybody yet. So, anyway, I, there's just a little bit of attention there for me thinking, because I really want to tell you the questions I want to ask, but then I'm also thinking, but do I really want to know these answers if we're not looking for some, you know? So, I'm really kind of struggling with that. But I'll, I'll, I'll send you the, my, my numbers electronic.
Christine, Christine, this is Bruce. Hi, I just, I, a question I was going to ask, are you, and I'm not quite sure I'm understanding exactly what you're saying. Are you looking at, in some ways, kind of some of the strategic plan pillars? Is that what you're, you're thinking about? I mean, I agree with, with what Kate said. I think it's, it's definitely going to be one of our main pillars. So, you want to have something about that. But are there other, is that what you're thinking of? I'm asking you that question.
Well, I, yeah, I definitely think that that's a part of it. And the questions that we've been asking about what the staff and, and the community are looking for. So, it, right now, those are a little bit blended in my mind, only because we're gathering data with both in mind. But yes, that would be a little bit of a part of it. But they're also, for me, I, I, you know, I don't know, like, things like, is, do we have a minimum degree that we're going to look, be looking for? Or, you know, do, do people have to have at least a master's with a PhD preferred? Or are we expecting a PhD? Or, you know, any of those kinds of things, which really are the point at which we start then selecting people to move on or not. That's an easy one to think about because it's concrete. But I, I do think we often, we should talk about whether or not there are other areas, like equity, curriculum development, um, even financial, I noticed was on here. And you. We have such a, you know, we have a, we, we have such a strong person in Jeff, but Jeff might not be here forever because, Jeff Mahoney, now I'm talking, because he might retire. Um, not, you know, so, anyway, I, I need to get a little bit clearer on that.
And I think one of the things that so far, I think at the last check, you had forty, some staff members that have commented. And I think we were at like a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty parents and community members. So, actually, this week's blog, I tried to make some real big generalizations, you know, from what I've read. So, I mean, I think, you know, from those generalizations, I mean, one of the, the qualities that came up quite frequently were, you know, a good communicator. You know, someone who's a good communicator, someone who's visible. I mean, my end goal will be to create, you know, a much more concrete document that, but if you want to take a look, those are things that, you know, people want you to take a look at when you're doing your selection. Writing essays is one type of communication. When they speak in front of groups will be another type, but, um, but these questions are to help you sort down.
I'd like to add, you're absolutely right. Communicator, good communicator ends up being a good leader. Because you're, 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 if, if you can get dialogue, you get people working with you going forward. So, the, the good coach, coaches the team with structure to, to go ahead and win. You know what I mean? That's really the truth. And I think in all of our pillars, I think we're, we're, we are nailing them down. And I think curriculum is also, they got to have a good read on curriculum. Because curriculum changes. Times change. And, you know, you don't do the same thing forever and you have to, and there's, and there's developments that come up. And you need somebody that, that under, we have a good, a great curriculum instructor right now. Very happy, you know what I mean? But you, the superintendent's got to run with that curriculum because that's the game plan. That's, that's what we are going to be tested on in the state testing, you know? That's what, something that our kids are going to have to have. You know, the best ability to be successful in life is a, is a good curriculum. We have to, you know, be real. That's, you know, so I think all that we've been talking about tonight is, is, is just kind of falling into place, but it's, it's actual. Because, you know, everybody has their challenges. Everybody has their strengths. And you want to line your strengths up as much as you can. And if wherever you're weak on, maybe if you're not a number five or a number four, you know, you're, you're running very close to that. You know, you need, you, we're, we're going to try to ask for a lot out of a person. But that person's going to rely on his team around him. And if he's got a good, or she, not he or she, I say the wrong term all the time. But the, if they're, you know, if their team around them is strong and, and they can walk with them, that whole movement of the administration will go forward and our kids will be the result of it. And I, I think that's, you're very true. I think, I'm, I'm very comfortable with that. Because if you don't, then you'll end up playing catch-up ball someplace and then, then we're behind.
And in all honesty, curriculum is a hot-button topic right now.
It always is.
Well, I, it's, it's to such a degree with the, with the, you know, critical race theory.
Well, sure.
Objections and, and even the legislature getting involved in that sort of thing now. So, um, yeah, I, I think equity is a, is a no-brainer in terms of, you know, we need somebody who's strong along those lines. And I, and curriculum, I think it might not be your forte, but you certainly have to be versed enough in it to keep us out of trouble.
I'm not a slouch. It's just not my strength.
No, I, I agree. Okay. Oh, what do we, what do we have next here?
Well, just taking a look is that what's important, I think, Kate, you know, is that if you have some of the discussion now, it makes it easier to come up with the five, you know? And mine, I kind of like open-ended questions.
So do I.
Because if they're open-ended, you get a more of a opportunity to see what they're really thinking. If they're too, um, limited, you know, then you may not get a chance to fully understand them. So, I always, I like questions that are more open-ended myself.
I like the last one, too, about teacher shortages. Well, then I clicked off of it.
Because obviously, that's one that's been talked about with.
Yeah.
And especially staff surveys and that, or what are we going to do to, you know, keep our staff and retain?
Hire and retain.
So, I think that that's one I would like to see answered personally on the application because I want to know what their ideas are and how relevant they think teacher retention is. Because that's a problem, so.
Well, you, you just noticed that so many of them, I, I was just going through in my mind, just kind of like, which one of these are about morale? That's really about morale as well. I mean, they're all addressing in some way.
Well, it's about morale, but it's also about the teacher shortage, so it's a little different. I mean, morale is for the people that are already here.
But not if they leave.
Well, exactly.
And that's, that's, that's what I was thinking about. I, I tend to feel the future at some point, because as you said, well, I guess that was at the, the village meeting we were having. You know, eighty percent of the people don't have children.
Right.
So, that's why I started thinking of number seventeen. This idea that, you know, what can we do or what we, how can we show in some ways the, the community that we're providing something that benefits them? And I thought it would just, they, they'd have to be very creative and start thinking of ways. But again, I, to me, I look at it and there's a couple that, to me, are kind of similar. How are you involved in your community? That was number six. There was another one that I thought. So, it just depends. I do like them, like, like Dr. Anderson's saying, to be somewhat open-ended. So, they really have to be creative. And we'll see how creative they are, actually.
I mean, like, and I'm not telling you to pick this one, but like number eleven, what's education's greatest challenge?
Yes.
I mean, there isn't a right or wrong answer. It gives you a, it gives you an opening into what do they think, you know? Is, you know, is it teacher retention? Is, is that the biggest challenge? You know, is it being able to pass a referendum? Is that, it gives you an opportunity from, at least from their perspective and where they've been. What are they thinking?
And the thing I like about, say, number eleven, is that I'm hoping that this individual, whoever she or he is, will start thinking in terms of, well, maybe I better do some research on McFarland and what's going on there.
Sure.
And that's what, I guess, I'm really hoping they'll do, that they'll really start looking at our community and our history.
Last time we did this, the ones, the ones that kind of floated up to the top, they all did that.
Yeah.
They were, they, they, they had studied some McFarland School District history.
Yeah.
They, they were at least able to talk about it.
Is there any others that stand out to anybody? I mean, I know they're all great, but we can use some of them for interview questions.
Right.
Yeah.
So, when would you like these? As soon as possible, really?
Well, I would like to be able to put a draft one together by the fifteenth. So, if you could tell me by the end of this week or next Monday?
Okay.
That would be great.
Yep.
In fact, if you, what you can do is you can share them. Then I can share them out and say, all right, here's how close we are now. You just need a little bit more and then my guess is when you hear what others say, you know? I guess that would be a good one. I could take that and we can come to some type of, you know, a consensus. So, we already have a couple that Kate's mentioned that seem to get some good head nods. Number two.
Yep.
Number five, even though I spelt it wrong, and number eighteen. Just a couple, you know, a couple more. So, um, if you like those three, good, then we'll find two more. And if you let me know, I'll just communicate back and forth until we get to the five. But the goal is, is that for me to bring a draft application on the fifteenth, so you can see, here's what it will look like. Here's what we're asking people to do when they're applying. And then you can determine if there's some change. Now, let you see that a week in advance, so I'm not going to wait till the fifteenth.
Yeah.
Next week, on Monday, I'll probably send it. Here's what it looks like. Tell me if there's something else that you want to see. I mean, there's, part of it, and this is the posting, so I'll go right into the posting part, is that, you know, you're going to want at least three letters of recommendation. I look for recent letters because, to be real honest, a letter that was written five years ago, you know, doesn't hold, hold much value for me because we, we can change quite a bit. And if you're really looking, you're going to find something more recent.
Circumstances have certainly changed in the last five years.
So, I usually look for things that, you know, some recent letters, letters of recommendation. You always look at transcripts. You want to see, you know, what kind of, what kind of student were they? And you don't have to be an A student to be, you know, a good superintendent. But you want to see, you know, what kind of a student were they from the transcripts? What kind of courses did they take? Because there are sorts, there are all sorts of different educational programs. It wasn't like when I was doing this, that, you know, basically Madison and Milwaukee were your two major players. Now, there's lots of players. And so, you, I think you want to see what type of courses people took to be prepared. And there's, I'm just having, I'm just drawing a blank. But, you know, transcripts, letters of resume, completed application, the essays, these are types of things. And if there's some other thing that you would like to have them provide, then we'll have them provide that. A list of, you know, a list of contacts. But I'll be real honest, I very rarely use the people that they put down as a reference because you're going to give me somebody who's going to tell me something good about you. I mean, if you don't, we've got a real problem. What I want to find out is the people that worked with you that you may not have used as a reference. So, I think references are important, but I think you need to go farther than that if you really want to get a true picture of the individual coming in for how the person's worked with coworkers.
I just have a, one thought. I, I just, I'm curious what you, you guys, and Christine as well, what you feel. I think, and it gets back in some ways, Kate, to the morale issue. I just think it's really important for whoever this person is to understand the impact that Act Ten had on education. And I don't, that's, that's the one thing that I, I don't think people realize what an impact it had. And it's, it's given, it's there, but I think you need to be aware of that. And I'm just kind of curious how you, you feel.
That's interesting. I, I honestly had not thought about that. But it, that's an interesting take.
It just changed so much. I mean, again, it's a given. There's not much you can do about it, but you have to be at least aware of it.
Well, it still affects us in a lot of ways.
Oh, it definitely does. And in fact, I keep looking for, are there, you know, out of every problem, there's always, you know, something good that can come out of it. And so, I keep looking for those opportunities. But I'm even curious how you feel about that. Is that important? Is it not important? I don't know.
Well, I think the important thing to remember now is that there's a large segment of superintendents that never, they've all started after Act Ten was over.
Yeah.
They can't, they don't know what it was beforehand because they didn't deal with it beforehand. There's a fair group, fair number of educators, teachers that are in the profession after Act Ten.
Including, I think the majority here, yeah.
So, it's, it's harder now to say what that is because there's been a significant period of time that it's, it's not like, well, those first couple of years when the change was, how dramatic it was. Now, there's a sizable pop percent of both teachers and administrators who never went through it. So, for them to say, well, like, well, like, you know, they'd have to be honest and say, we weren't in it. We, we don't really know. And I don't know that you can count that against them. It's just, you know, it's just the way that it is. But I think that, you know, the questions on how you're going to deal with morale, how you're going to deal with decision-making. I mean, there's lots of decision-making styles. How do people make decisions? And I keep going back. I think somehow you want to come up with questions on how the individual's going to relate to you as a board. You know, because in your own mind, there must be certain things that you're going to have of expectations. And as Christine has stated, is that when you're taking a look, is that, you know, if, you know. how that person answered may determine, well, yes, that's what we're looking for, or no. If that's the way they're going to interact with us, that's what we don't want.
And I'm just, I'm confident that we will have a number of, the number of applicants that we have will be adequate for us to, to be a little choosy.
Yeah.
It's always kind of been that way here, and I, I think our district has earned the reputation that we've got, but we can't assume.
I'm going to guess that you're probably going to get about twenty-five applicants. You're going to be able to throw out ten, because for one reason or another, they're just not going to be what you're looking for. So you're probably going to have fifteen solid ones that you're going to have to determine. How many of these solid ones do we want to, do we think we should invite in for an interview? And that's going to be as you really look at each one of them and make a determination.
And I hope it's a tough call.
And I always remind you, only need one.
Yep.
Yep.
Can I ask a question? One of the things that I think is extremely important, and, and it ties to, ties to a lot of different things, but when a student is going through our school system and they leave, we need to know if we had them ready or prepared to go on, and if she, if they, if they are, you know, they could tell us where our strengths and weaknesses are also. But that, in, haven't, this, that's our end result. We, we do everything we can until the senior year, then we, our hands are off. But at least we know we've moved people to be successful. They had a, you know, they're happy with their life, they're happy with their exposure, they're happy with what their job is, and they're successful. And that, that, so they can compete with any district around, in any area around, and they're, and that's, that's something, I don't know how you would ask that, but you, that's, that's the main, that's the main thing that we're trying to get to on our, on our, all of our curriculum, on all of our programs. That student leaves here prepared, and they hopefully have a vision to what they like, good, a good chance of it, and, and they have a successful life.
How do we track that?
And we survey.
Yep.
You survey two years after. You got out of school, maybe five or six years again, and you follow up on those. And, and you'd be surprised of how those results will come in. And they will tell you, they might, where you're really at, and what, what we're accomplishing. Now, we have a lot cooking in this school, that, that this is really, it's probably the best I've ever seen how much activity we have in this school, happening in our, in our building, in our curriculum, really. I mean, we've got, we got, a shop class got half the school in it. You know, we've got a lot of things happening here, all over, things are happening. But that is what we got to be reading it, and that's what the superintendents got to have an eye on. And that's what our board's got to have an eye on. And, and we got, we have to have a question for that, and then see what that answer is out of the individual, because that'll tell you where his, where his heart and where his head's at, you know? Because that's really basically what we're here for, is those kids' success.
I mean, I think that there are definitely ways that you can find out from your students where they, what they think, what the parts of their education that were the most useful for them, and which are the things that they would have liked to have had that weren't offered. I think trying to construct a question for an applicant to answer that would be pretty difficult, because.
Well, I would like to see how they would attack that. How would they go after, they basically should have the same goal, should be, you would think.
I'll take a stab at creating some type of question and send it out tomorrow. I just don't have one now, but.
No, I, I'm just.
I think the important part is if we can, I'll take a look at the questions. The goal is to get it down to the five.
Yeah.
And like you said, five's not matching, or I think.
And, and I could, I can kind of tell you, and Arlen, I think you'll agree with this, that this kind of came, came to become an issue, I don't remember exactly how many years back it was, but at one point in time, the board found out how many of our graduates have to take remedial courses in order to qualify for some of the college courses that they're interested in. And we were kind of floating along, finishing, you know, third in the county on all the forward testing and all of the composite GPAs and things like that. I think we just thought we were, we were just chugging these kids out, and they were going out and succeeding immediately. And all of a sudden, we find out that half of them are taking remedial classes when they, when they enroll in the university in order to get in, some of the others. So that was kind of a wake-up. And at that point, Arlen kind of made a push for, well, why aren't, why aren't we following up with these kids? You know, two years after they're out, and then maybe five years after they're out. I don't think ever anything really came of it.
Well, I'll do my hand at trying to create something.
Christine?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut off Dr. Anderson again. It, it also sounds like, you know, besides thinking about the, the ways that we might evaluate them for the first go-round or the first, you know, moving people into the next round, it sounds like we might want to think about listing other questions, and, you know, what are the other questions that are going to be asked? Also, I'm assuming that people are taught, or we're doing, there's some training about what people can't ask. And we haven't talked about this process yet, but I'm assuming that in the future, when we start thinking about interviewing, we also will look at that type of information, because they're, for example.
Right. When we get to the interview, who's going to be on the initial interview teams, we'll look at all the questions that'll be asked, and I'll be there to make sure that the, so that we know that here are the questions that we would like asked, and here are the questions you can't ask, and I'll be, you know, basically a silent participant to make sure everybody's doing it the way that should be done. So for posting, I'll come up, we'll come up, we'll reach the five. I'll send you a lot of draft. The, the platform that is the most common is Weekend. We use it for all of ours. It's most common for administrators. To, we, the Career Leadership Center is a part of the State Superintendent Association that directs people to that. So I'll bring you in the cost for that. But what that does is it basically lets individuals throughout the state know that there's an opening, and keeps it, so, and that directs them to Weekend to fill out the application. So by next week, or the end of this week, I'll send you a draft application to look at. And, you know, basically is, your job is to tell me things you'd like to see changed until we get to the fifteenth, and you say, yep, I think it looks good, we're ready to go. And then we'll post, and we can decide how long the posting should be.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone? Anyone at all? Okay. Next on the agenda is discussion on twenty-two, twenty-three calendar options.
I think this is an interesting one, is that we did put out the survey today. And before I walked into the meeting, we already had a hundred and twenty-some responses. At this point, ninety-two percent of the responses want a calendar that is either the traditional calendar, or the traditional calendar with a couple additional vacation days built in. So by far, the largest group would like that type of a calendar. Like I said, as I came in, I think we had a hundred and twenty-four applicants, or a hundred and twenty-four people respondents from our staff, so I was, in fact, when we first put it out, I was surprised how fast people were answering. Because when I asked Angie, at one point, and she said we had eighty, I said, did you say we have eighty? And she said, yep. I thought, oh my goodness. People are responding to this one in a hurry. We didn't have any responses for what they wanted in the superintendent. But I think, and I'm, meeting with Angie was on tomorrow, and we'll go over it. And I will make a, you know, I'll give you all of the information, you know, by when I do McFarland minutes. And I'll print out all of the comments so you can see. But I think right now, it's, it seems fairly clear that the calendar will probably look, if we base it on those type of responses, it'll be similar to things we've had in the past. But I'll send you all of that towards the end of the week. But we already had a very good response rate.
Yeah. It seems to me that we're, that my fear of survey fatigue at least hasn't grabbed hold quite yet. We're getting great responses to the last couple that have gone out.
I think it depends on the topic.
You may very well be, you may very well be right there, Mrs. Green.
The only thing I'm concerned about is you do have a, a pretty big split. There's a, really, two groups. And, you know, I'm concerned, in some ways, it's kind of the tyranny, or tyranny of the majority, in a sense, where you have some people who I, I feel in some ways, they, they are at a point in their career, they're going like, I don't know if I can continue going the way it is right now. And I just, you know, I'm hoping colleagues will be cognizant of the fact that, you know, you've got members out there that, at this point, are really kind of crying out. And, you know, I'm, I'm thinking to myself, my father-in-law told me that, you know, I should get a job, you know, bagging groceries in the summer, because I was only a teacher. And I remember at the end of the year, talking to my wife and saying, you know, I'm completely just wiped out when that school year is over, and I need that, that summer to recover. As I got older, I started realizing in some ways, if we could have done it in a more humane way, with taking breaks here and there, you'd lengthened it out, but I don't know if that would not be a better idea. And I, I guess, I wish we could at least look at some options. I know when I was talking with, you know, Darren Riggins, between the two of us, we had sixty years of experience about, and we both got really excited with this. I know that at this point, it is far from being the most, you know, the most popular. But I'm just wondering if some ways, maybe in the summer or something, we could actually have a group of teachers who would study. And I, I mention this because when Mr. Hickey was principal, he came to us with the idea that we might look at the fourth period day, the block. And I remember at the time being very much saying, oh, I don't want to do this. This sounds ridiculous, you know? I mean, if I'm having a hard enough time with forty-seven minutes, or whatever it was our schedule was, what will it be like in an hour and a half? And it's, it's really going to be tough. But Jim organized a, a group of us, and he got people from the high school from different, of the disciplines, and we drove up to Blaine High School. And it was really an eye-opener for me to actually talk, a person who was against it, to listen to this guy tell me, you, you're going to love this. You, you've got to try this. And, you know, I, I've seen how the state is just, it's kind of gone that way. Interestingly, near our cabin in Minnesota, Wadena, Minnesota, was one of the first to go to the block. And I remember, you know, what, what is this thing all about? And so there is a part of me, I wish we could, we're near the university. I'd love to have, again, the, the School of Ed, have some experts come in, tell us what are they think, theoretically, the best educational practices. I hope you don't mind, but, you know, Dr. Anderson said, he was studying about some of these ideas of, of a longer school year in the nineteen-eighties. And I've talked with enough former colleagues and enough administrators in this building and say, you know, there's something out here. I just would like to give some of these people who might be in that thirty percent, who are outnumbered by the seventy or eighty percent, at least some hope that, you know, maybe we're looking towards some, some new ideas.
We, we kind of went through that with standards-based grading.
Yeah.
You know, it was kind of the same thing.
Yeah. So I just thought, you know, maybe it's something we can consider doing. I would not do it during the school year. It's, it's a crazy time. But maybe in the summer. And I think it would, it would give some of those people who are kind of down right now, some hope that, you know, we're, we're at least looking at that, so.
I have no issue with it.
Yeah. I mean, it's something we can consider.
Yep. I mean, you know, if, when it's a, when it's just an overwhelming response, when you get, you know, eighty-plus percent or ninety-plus percent, it's, it, it is, it's, just to touch on the difficult side, to back up and continue to work through some options that have been determined not to be popular amongst the majority of the staff.
Totally agree.
That having been said, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with doing what you can do to, I don't know if appease is the right word, but those folks that are questioning, or undecided, or just getting burned out. Give them, give them some hope.
I do think there are ways to even take the traditional calendar and make some modifications that might, might address some of the issues a little bit. I mean, you know, there, I mean, there are some things you can do. And I'll start creating a, you know, a draft calendar to send out to the board to take a look at, based on this, and Berserk to take a look at early, you know, so we can start looking. There are some things, but I do think it, at least at this point, it's, it seems pretty clear on what at least the majority of staff would like to see. And we're talking about, like you said, this was ninety-two percent, so it's not like, it's like, kind of fifty-fifty. It's like, there's a.
Well, and I will say, you know, to play devil's advocate to kind of what you're saying, I think there's also a lot of teachers that think they want this. And then, like, I've talked to teachers in other districts who have it, who don't like it. So they think it's what they want, and then they realize that that time that's built in for them to do professional development and things like that during their day, it doesn't happen, because they're so overwhelmed with the other daily tasks. So there is that as well, is that, you know, sometimes people think they want something, and then they talk to other groups who are doing it, and it's not what they thought it was going to be, too.
Other, and, you know, Dr. Anderson has talked about schools that have gone to the early release slash teacher collaboration for a period of time, and going back to the way it was previous to that. So it's a, these are all tough, tough decisions, but, but ninety-two percent is a mandate in my book.
Well, it, it doesn't it don't depend on ninety-two out of how many? If we don't have an overall, you know, good response rate, it's ninety-two out of, you know, fifty people, then we really don't need to look at it. We need to make sure that it is represented.
There was a hundred and twenty-four, a hundred and twenty-four respondents that had that, when we came into the meeting.
Right. How many is that out of, Dr. Anderson?
About half. So that's what, fifty percent of our staff so far.
And that's in a few hours.
Yeah, that's only in a day.
Within less than a day.
Yeah.
Yeah. Typically, you get about eighty percent of your first responses with electronic surveys in the first twenty-four hours. And then over that, beyond that, it, it just significantly decreases. That's kind of a standard.
And I'll send, like I said, I'll send it all of it out to you this week. But I thought that was a lot of respondents in a short period of time, and it seemed to be.
Yeah. Well, but I will also say that this is a very important topic. And if you choose not to respond to the survey, then.
Don't bitch.
Yeah.
Well.
So we can send, you know, friendly reminders, but at some point, if you don't respond, then you really lose the right to complain about it.
I think most, I think most of staff is catching that part of my personality, is that I'll give you the opportunity, but if you don't take it, don't complain later.
Yeah.
All right.
Moving on.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes. Sorry, Christine.
I, I think Dr. Anderson alluded to this earlier, but I hope we could look at, I mean, the, the calendar was intended to be a solution to a problem. Can we look at what the underlying problems are if we're not going to solve, you know, maybe some, some staff's, you know, why, why this idea all came up? Can we look at the root cause and the, the issues? I guess I'm afraid that we will say, well, we're going to go with this calendar, and I don't know which one it'll be. And then if it doesn't meet the needs of the other group, that we could maybe look at what those needs were and try to address it in a different way. That's all I'm saying.
And like you said, I think there are some ways we can do some tweaks that will do. And like you said, I think there are some ways we can do some tweaks that will do something.
Well, let's see what happens. Okay. Education effectiveness waiver.
One of the things that I am asking you to consider, and this is not an action item, if the, if you're in agreement or at least have consensus, next board meeting I would have it as first, you have to have a public hearing on it. You may have done this already in the past. And then you can have your vote. But one of the things, in fact, I just got a notification from the State Superintendent Association today about the waiver process because it's been used quite, quite a bit the last two years. Because of COVID. And, and it looks like it's going to be used by quite a few districts this year. One of the things that I would like the board to consider is waiving, is applying for, to the Department of Public Construction, the waiver on educator effectiveness. Specifically, the SLO, which is a specific learning objective. We do what's called PPGs, which are your personal goals, and your SLOs, which are your specific learning objectives. And the SLO seems for whatever reason to put a lot of stress on staff. That is basically where you, you design a goal for your classroom and then you basically try to measure throughout the year how successful that goal is, you know, how successful you are at that goal. If it's meeting what you had thought it would be. Looking at the stress level of our staff, I think that we could ask for a waiver for that particular portion. I'm pretty certain that if we applied, the Department of Public Construction would grant it. And I think it would provide some stress relief for our staff. It doesn't stop the evaluation process.
That was going to be my question then.
It, it doesn't stop the process. The educator effectiveness process is a three-year process. So you basically have two years of information gathering and a third year of summative. We're not going to stop that because you would be too many people to do, try to do a summative in one year. But you can let this one section go and you can still have your PPGs and you can still carry on so that during your summative year, you still have information available to make a decision based on the rubric that the state gives us. But, but I do think it would be greatly appreciated by the staff. You know, it would be hard for me to tell you why that causes so much strife. I don't know that I have an answer for that. But I can tell you that it does. And when we're trying to look at some ways that we could be cognizant of the stress that the staff is under or feels under and how we might make some minor changes to help alleviate part of that, I think this would be a good option. That I think would send a very positive signal to the staff and would maybe give them a sense of breathing space.
Any discussion?
So I've.
Go ahead.
I've done a little bit of research because when you sent this out, I didn't honestly even really know what SLOs were, not being in the education field. So I've talked to a few teachers in the district. I've talked to some teachers out of the district. And I mean, I get roughly the same response from all of them that it's, it's a lot of work. I do know that two other districts in Dane County are not at the current time, and of course that could change, waiving SLOs this year. And that's Wannakee and Sun Prairie.
Yep.
So they're not waiving SLOs.
Right.
I, it's not the specific SLO that I think is important. I'm glad we're doing PPGs, but my question would be, how are we measuring this? Because there's a couple items here that I think we need to address, right? We need to make sure that new teachers are, you know, having goals and having the help that they need. We don't want to lose that, right? So setting objectives and working towards goals in the classroom, I think, is really important. And I also think, based on what you've said, they didn't really complete their SLOs with the school year 2019, wait, what year are we in? So the year that we went into the pandemic, they didn't finish their SLOs, correct?
Correct.
Then last year we had no SLOs. And if we waive them this year, then that's a third year. And I'm not saying that that's a terrible thing. I just want to point that out. You know, there's a lot of things that have happened since teachers probably fully completed their last SLO. And one of those things that I think needs to be addressed, and it's not necessarily something to talk about tonight, is whatever you want to call it, the learning loss, learning gap that's come with our kids in this pandemic. And if waiving this takes away their stress and gives them time to invest in the classroom, but we still have a measurement for how the teacher they're doing in the classroom and how they're helping these kids, because clearly I'm seeing it with my own children. I think everyone in the community who has kids in this district is seeing it. We need to make sure that we're addressing that if we're waiving something else to give them more time and, and limit their stress level.
And I don't know how much you know about educator effectiveness and all that. I'm sure Bruce was under it one before he retired. But there are still, you know, even with the waiver, where you do the mini observations and the larger ones. So there's a certain amount of observations that administrators will go in and do on staff throughout the process, even without, even if the SLO is waived. So it's not that you won't have both small, you know, I'll call it short and longer observations, where you meet with the teacher to determine what it is that you've seen, what it is you're looking for and all that. So there's a discussion on, you know, basically what things will look like in the classroom. But it does take care of this one, what I'll call it, a paper component that they wouldn't have to do.
Okay. And then I guess I learned, I'm just going to share everything I learned because I wasn't aware of some of it. So your professional development hours are, they're all set by the district now. The state doesn't require those for licensure, correct? Like the.
Right, there used to mean, long ago, this was, they used to have where you could get, what do they call them, CEUs, I'm trying to think.
Yeah, I mean, like my license for healthcare. I have continuing education that I have to do every year for that.
Right, there's no requirement.
So then you guys kind of pick the professional development that you want the teachers to do, correct? Okay. And then how is all of this, I guess, monitored within the district? So for example, if we waived SLOs with these PPGs, who's, who's working with the teachers? The principal?
Right, the building administrators work with those. I mean, Melissa obviously has, you know, an overarching role that she plays. Lauren would have a role that she would play with, like special ed, but primarily it falls into the building level administrators working. In fact, most of them now are working with theirs. They're having like a building-wide
PPG.
Personal goal, you know, that they all will work on together. So they spend time with their staffings discussing it. The part of things I think you were discussing is that for the, like licensure, there used to be certain things you had to do to keep up licensure, and that was wiped out a number of years ago. So all the training we do is based on, you know, what we think they need to do within our own district, but there isn't. I mean, once you get your, your license now, unless you do something that would make it go away, you don't have to have, it used to be six credits every five years. Then it went to different systems. You don't have that anymore.
So this is the only thing though that DPI requires is this?
DPI requires that you do, educator effectiveness is the evaluation system that is the legislature adopted throughout the state. There are two different models to that, but, you know, they are essentially the same. In which the way that it works is that basically all administrators end up, it's like taking an exam so that if I walk into, watch your classroom or Bruce walks in and watches your classroom, we've already, you know, went through a process that we would look for the same types of things so that if we both were to grade you, our grading should be pretty consistent. So it doesn't waiver. That's what educator effectiveness and it said, okay, these are things and here are things to look for. Here are things you can choose to look for. So it's just a more scripted way of evaluating teachers have throughout the state. It used to be everybody had their own system. It's a statewide system.
Okay.
So at some point we have to do these SLOs though, right?
Yes.
If, if not this year, we, we have to do them next year.
Yes.
We are, we are working on PPGs and, and to this point, are you satisfied that the PPG is adequate to set forth goals in the same way that maybe an SLO would? I, I mean, I'm not saying the PPG replaces it, but does it kind of meet the same end? Is it, is it a, an evaluation piece that's big enough, adequate enough so that we don't have to do these SLOs and evaluate the staff appropriately?
Well, first, what I believe is that irregardless of the SLO, there'll still be the evaluation of staff. I'm not asking you to say, we're not going to evaluate staff.
Okay.
We will. There'll still be many observations. There'll still be times when you have the larger summative evaluations. What I'm asking you not to basically waive is this is a paperwork component of the process. I think we can take, we can ask for a waiver, this, this paperwork portion. And I don't think that it will, I don't think it's going to diminish the evaluation that the administrators will do in their buildings with their teachers, giving the ones help and direction they need it, you know, and encouraging those that are doing a good job. But it will take care of a paperwork component that I think will eliminate some stress.
Okay.
We have all those building administrators who are sitting in the background who do this on a daily basis, who can easily fill in any blanks that I've missed, should they choose to.
Bruce, have you got any, any discussion on this?
Yeah. It's hard. I, I just come from a, a feeling, a lot of this stuff that you're going to try to put metrics on, you can't measure. I, I, I don't know. I, I mean, I, I talk with former educators, I talk with people who weren't educators and they say, you know, it isn't what I remember, the, the content specifically about this teacher. I just remember the quality of the person. And I don't know how you measure some of those things. And I do know that I was very stressed over these things. These stressed me out tremendously because my concern was my kids and, 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 and being creative and caring and, and getting them through there. I really cared a lot about my, my content. But I felt like this was just something that was distracting me from what I wanted to do, which was really teach. And I found it really hard. And again, Dr. Anderson alluded, it changed. It changed for me. I was very fortunate. Mr. Hickey was, he, I think he kind of took pity on me because I went down and talked to him. I just said, this really stresses me out. I don't, I don't understand it. I don't know how you can do it. I have a hard time, in some ways I'm very conservative. I, I have a hard time thinking that you can have some bureaucratic apparatus that's going to tell one size fits all for all teachers and we're going to be lockstep. We're dealing with human beings. We're dealing with kids. We're not turning out widgets that you can count them, see that they're all the same and da, 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 da. It just doesn't work that way. And part of the, the mental health aspect to me is, you know, if teachers are stressed, kids are going to feel it.
Have you, have you ever thought of alternatives to, you know, because, because there has to be an evaluation process.
Yeah, I, I'll put it another way. As a coach, I sure as heck wanted to know what the rules of the game were. And I want to know what I was going to be graded on, as it were. I wouldn't want to be out there and all of a sudden they say, okay, now we're changing it in the middle. When I'm, you know, we're doing standardized tests and stuff like that. I have no idea what's on that test. So how can I be graded as a teacher on what I, I didn't even know was going to be out there? I mean, I knew kind of generally what was going to be on there in a U.S. history test. But, you know, to sit there and say, we've, we've, we can measure that we've lost, you know, some, some learning. I think it's just really hard to measure some of this stuff.
Is teacher performance rated in a significant way based on student achievement? I mean, is that a big piece of evaluating a teacher, how their students do on standardized tests?
No, but you have to figure out how you're going to measure it. That's the thing that took energy to sit there and I just found that was distracting me from what I really wanted to do. I don't know, I kind of taught by my gut. I don't know how to say that.
Well, and that's probably what made you the teacher you were. And, and the relationships that you had with your students. But it's different for everyone.
Yes, it is. And I also understand that, you know, I wasn't successful with everyone either. I mean, that's just a fact.
And just to, you know, just to repeat, is that I'm not asking that we don't evaluate staff. What I'm asking that we apply for a waiver so that this portion, the SLO, the writing and all that, that we can get a waiver from that. It doesn't stop evaluations. It doesn't stop working with teachers. It just takes one component of this program and says that the teachers don't have to do that portion this year.
Okay. Christine, do you, you have a, a feel one way or another?
I'm, I think at this point, I appreciate the discussion and I'm really just considering everything. So I don't, I don't, this is just a discussion at this point, correct?
Right.
Yep, no, I'm, I'm still learning and I do, I think I'll second what Dr. Anderson said for any administrators. If they wanted to say anything about it, it would be helpful because I believe these evaluations fall to you. So any input or just more description would be helpful.
All right.
I'm, I'm happy to share, you know, my thoughts about it. Yes, I beat Melissa to it. I think it's really important to understand that the SLO is just one small component of the process, but the one component of the process that is most stressful for teachers. And, and part of it is, I think this is a unique time and I don't want us to, to overlook that. I think, you know, Kate made some good points about acknowledging we haven't been doing SLOs and I think the reason is because of the pandemic. So our teachers are having to do a lot of things they've never had to do. And the transition back into the school year has not been a typical transition. And so we're, we're doing things to try to meet kids where they're at and try to acclimate them to being in school where usually we'd be months ahead of where we are. The, the transition back has gone slower and teachers are having to spend much more time preparing and working with students in ways they weren't before. So the idea was, let's take something that requires a lot of time, the SLO development, our teachers take it very seriously and put a ton of time into it. Let's take that, set that aside so that they can focus on the kids that are in front of them and the more day-to-day things that are, that are really pressing right now for our staff.
Excellent, thank you very much, Erin. Melissa?
Yeah, I would say, to clarify the educator effectiveness system, there are really three big parts to it. One is the evaluations and the observations that principals do in the classrooms. Those are going to remain and those are a lot of work for the principals. They need to coordinate that, collect evidence. You know, there's a lot of paperwork for principals in that. And that part is staying. The second part, the professional practice goal, also staying, is where the teachers select an area of their practice they want to improve on. They learn, they try things out, they collaborate. That part is staying as a part of this. The part that we're asking for a waiver for just one year, now it's one more year, but one year would be this student learning objective where it is where we're measuring student outcomes. And as Chris, Kate mentioned, we really need to be mindful of what our student outcomes look like at this point. And we are doing some more refined data analysis at the administrative level and with teachers who are teacher leaders. But what we're asking for the waiver of is the. But what we're asking for the waiver of is the paperwork that each individual teacher would need to do on those individualized goals. We're not saying that we're not going to measure student outcomes and measure student progress and attend to it and meet students where they're at. We're just saying we'd like to do that in more of a collective way, at a school level, at a grade level, team level, lots of levels. But at that amount, as opposed to having each individual teacher complete the paperwork at this time, which is a recognition of, like Mr. Tarnitzer said, the amount of things teachers are being asked to do at this time and to learn to do differently. We're trying to recognize that and pull one of the pieces back off of their plate and handle it in a way that is outside of the normal system for us.
Uh, Melissa, then, are, are you confident that if granted a waiver for this year, we will be in position next year to not have to go back and ask for another waiver? That, that we'll be in position that we're back close enough to normalcy that we can do these SLOs again?
The idea of being back close enough to normalcy is very appealing. And I certainly hope that we are. I've learned, I guess, over the last 18 months not to take anything for granted. But when the administrative team kind of thought of this idea and discussed it, our intention was not for this to be an every-year sort of waiver. It was really an extraordinary circumstances waiver. And that, yes, we would be back to SLOs next year. But I don't want to go on the record as promising that just in case another set of extraordinary circumstances comes up.
I'm not asking for any promises.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Arlen, you got anything?
And what would happen is that, you know, if there is consensus to go forward, there'd be a public hearing. My guess is it'll be like five minutes because...
That's how they go.
Yeah, people don't usually come to talk about those things. And then you can, you make a motion and I would write a recommendation.
All right. Anybody got anything else? If they'd like to... Christine?
I'm sorry, I'm reacting to Dr. Anderson's comment about a public hearing, which is great. I understand why that would happen. But can we, can somebody try to describe what, what, how this decision does affect this idea of, and I'm going to quote it, "learning loss"? Because my fear is that this term, the, you know, learning loss has been thrown around, Kate. You know, I know, I've heard it and I've read about it. But the, our learning is not lost, it's delayed. It doesn't mean that kids aren't going to learn what they might have learned last year had the year been normal. So how does the idea of learning delay play a role in looking at student learning outcomes collectively instead of individually? Does that make sense? That was a really wordy question.
I don't understand what you said exactly, so...
Do repeat that again.
So I, I think I, can I, I think what you're asking is, instead of looking at it on an individual level, how are we going to look at it as, in a whole if they're not doing this individually? Is that what you mean?
Right. And so what I, what I heard Melissa say, and that's, I'm trying to interpret this. What I heard Melissa say was, what, or what, what we're, what we're asking teachers to not do this year is look very individually at their individual classroom and say, what can I do either for my class or my subject area classes? Rather, we're looking at this learning delay collectively for maybe a whole grade level. Like what did the whole grade level kind of miss through the pandemic that they would have gotten had we had a normal year? So what I'm hearing Melissa say, and this is what I think I'm checking out, is really what we're asking and what we're, what we're saying to these sites, the schools, is what they're doing is looking at this learning delay for, say, a whole, a whole grade level versus at a classroom level. Is that accurate?
Well, I would, I would say no. I would say what we're really asking is that there's a certain amount of paperwork that is associated with SLOs. And what we're looking at is not to have to do the paperwork. The actual teaching, the actual looking at what we need to do within the classroom, we're going to do that irregardless because that's just what we need to do to make progress. But the bureaucratic paperwork that's associated, we're saying they don't need to worry about that. That's really what we're looking at. That the bureaucratic paperwork associated with an SLO, we're asking to be waived. And Melissa's nodding, so I must have got it right.
Got it, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, moving on, discussion and action on COVID-19 protocols.
And this is on our regular monthly agenda. What we were notified today is that the mask mandate is going to be continued until November 27th. After that, they do not expect to extend it after that. They expect that when it ends on November 27th, they're not going to do any more extensions. The reason it's being extended is one of the, the case count. But I, but I think because there, there's strong anticipation that a vaccine is going to be available for students five to 11, for those parents who would like to have their children vaccinated and that they're going to give the time. So individuals who want to have their students, their children vaccinated can get the two doses of vaccine. And then after that, each individual district, depending on where they're at, can make the decision of, you know...
Making it optional.
You're right, should be mask mandate, should be mask optional. What do they look like? So right now, I don't see that there's any change. I think when we meet in December, we can take a look at, you know, did a significant portion of our population, are they vaccinated? And if so, do we want to make different protocols from that point on? I mean, I have a whole bunch of hopes inside, but...
We all do.
But, you know, I want to wait to find out what the, you know, what do the actual numbers turn out to be.
Okay, anybody? Christine, you got anything? Bruce?
No, I'm good.
Arlen?
No.
Kate?
I think we just need to maybe start talking about things once the vaccine's available a little sooner. I don't know that you're going to get a great idea by the time December rolls around kind of of what vaccination rates are. I think just something to put in everybody's head is just starting to think about, well, is it, is it okay to go to like a mask optional, um, school day? So just really, it's a discussion for later, but it's also something to start thinking about now, once the vaccine is available.
I know that we have been, Lauren has already been talking with Forward Pharmacy to hold when they, once it's officially, you know, approved so that shots can go into individuals' arms. Working, they get whatever vaccine doses they're going to get for us to set up something within our school building on a weekend to allow that to happen.
Yeah, I'm sure as, you know, I'm, I'm anxious to see what sort of vaccination rates we have with a five to 11 crowd. It'll, it'll be interesting for sure. But I, I guess, you know, there's no reason to make any changes to the current protocol today.
Especially with the mask mandate season in place, so...
Anybody disagree? All right, we'll move on. Discussion and possible action regarding 2122 calendar modification for November 24th, 2021, which is FYI, the day before Thanksgiving.
As we were with the, like, the waiver for the SLO, we were trying to take a look at what are some, some steps that we could take to let the staff members, and I say staff, not teachers, staff, because we're all in this together. What is it that we can do to let them know that we are listening? We are hearing. We understand that there's, you know, a certain amount of stress level and that the most valuable thing we can give them is time. What are the options that we have that can show that we're doing that? So we had discussions that, one of the things that people have said, in at least my construction for the 2223, is that, you know, could they have the Wednesday before Thanksgiving off? Most districts have that off. This district doesn't, but it's pretty common. It's coming up, so it's not something that's a long ways away. You know, it's basically three weeks, three and a half weeks away. So it's something you can set your sights to. It wouldn't influence our school year, depending on how many inclement weather days. We have built in several days, so now if we get bombarded, you know, I mean, we have a couple of options. One, for inclement weather, we could do virtual learning days, which means the DPI says you can come visit regular school days. That'll be a different discussion. Or, you know, we've built in enough time so that we could take that day off and still meet the number of minutes we had and still have some inclement weather days left. But if we did have a lot of inclement weather days, we would have to add something. But at least for the near term, looking at the possibility that, you know, nobody knows what the winter's going to hold. I think this is something that we could do that would let staff members know that, you know, we are finding a way to give you some additional time. It is something they can see in the foreseeable future. I just see just something that, that's a positive. I don't really see too many downsides to it. But, you know, will it be universally accepted? The answer is no. I've already had one parent who has asked you not to do this. I do think the number of pros will outweigh the number of cons. Just from anecdotal information is that the Wednesday before Thanksgiving isn't a very high attendance day here anyway. Because if you're, you find other, there are reasons that people have taken their kids out of school.
Yeah, well, you know, there's, there have been a few communications from some parents that they would prefer that, you know, they're okay with having the Wednesday off before Thanksgiving. Let's just not start it next month, or this month, I guess. But it, it hasn't been a lot. It hasn't been a whole bunch, you know? And I guess, as much as we'd like to please everyone, it's, we just, just can't do it. And this makes, this makes sense to me.
So that's what I'm recommending and hoping is that you will, you know, make a motion to modify the calendar to let this year in the calendar, the Wednesday, the 24th, be a...
Just to do it, but I do think that going forward, it'd be something I really would like to do. I'm not sure I can right now support it.
Christine, you have any feelings one way or another?
Yeah, I, you know, I see, I see all sides and certainly appreciate the comments that were just said. Being a working mom, pretty much my whole life here. My only thought, and I'm, this comes from the listening sessions, is that I am hearing, you know, the staff burnout, which is really the feelings that they're having now. They're, they're saying, teachers are telling me that these are the feelings that we have, you know, in December. And we're only, you know, like a few weeks ago in October. So I, my support of it is more about the health of the staff and how that affects, you know, our students. It's all connected. If, if our, if our staff are burnt out, they're not at their best selves teaching and, and students aren't, then also feeling, you know, great as well. So the reason why we're doing it, which is not as symbolic, I mean, it is symbolic, but it's really, it's really a reason to give staff time to, you know, recover earlier than they normally need it due to circumstances. So my feeling is in support of it, also recognizing that it is, you know, for families, perhaps a short timeline. So I can see both sides.
Okay. Anybody care to make a motion?
Wait, can I ask one more question?
Yes, you can.
So if, is there another day? I mean, I think that in the future, this is a great idea. So meetings that in, you know, the next calendar year. If we, would they be opposed to maybe just moving it back to attach to another long break so that parents had more time?
Well, the next break is going to be crisp, winter break. That's already pretty, I mean, that's already a pretty decent length. So I don't know that you'd want to add it on to that. And I think if you go, my personal belief is if you go beyond that, I think they need the day now. They don't need, you know, it's not that they may not need the day later.
They'll probably need the day in February or March, too. I mean, that's a long break, or that's a long length of time with no breaks in school.
How did, how did the administrators, did they support this?
Yes.
They did, okay. And I think they have a pulse.
Okay.
I would make the motion to make the date of November 24th, 2021. Make the motion of having it be, I don't even know what to call it. Can someone help me here?
A non-school, non-staff day? Or a paid day off for all staff?
I mean, what I, what I have written as a potential motion is, I move to change the current 2122 school calendar to make Wednesday, November 24th, a non-school, non-staff day.
Is that good, Christine?
That sounds perfect. I'm sorry, it only have on screen here and it's hard for me to see different things.
No, that's fine. Do I have a second?
I will second it.
Bruce is the second. Any further discussion?
I'm very concerned. I think it's a great idea. And I understand the staff. I just don't know what the people do if they don't have daycare to go to and they gotta go to work. It puts that family in a lot of stress. And I, I think it's, it's an honest thing to say that, that isn't like it used to be. You could find someone. Maybe they can't. I don't know how we could handle that, if we could assist in that and find out where, you know, what was out there. But some people may have a hard time. They have a job to go to and they're designated to be there. And it's holiday time, brings in, a lot of people have a lot of different jobs at holiday time, too. So, you know, I don't, I don't know what to say. But that, that I think is a, and that'll be mostly with the kids that are smaller, too.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So it's, it's, it is quite a ordeal if we could figure out a way to help that.
But my only, my only thought is, you know, we, it is three and a half weeks away yet. And, you know, a snow day, I mean, that, we don't consider things like that. We'll, we'll do it. So I think there is some planning time to be able to do it. And as we were talking earlier, it's needed now. It'd be great to add it on at a different time. But we're hearing that teachers are burned out now. So I, 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 I feel like we, although it would be great to have had it on the calendar and perhaps we'll have it on next year's, depending on what calendar is chosen. What I'm hearing is a real need for it to happen.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to move the, to change the current 2122 school calendar to make Wednesday, November 24th, a non-school, non-staff day. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no?
No.
No.
The ayes have it, three to two. So the motion carries. Action on McFarland High School's spring early college credit and Start College Now program requests.
So this is an easy one. Because really, though you have to make a motion, you really don't have any choice. Because this is one of the things that's required by state law, is to give students the opportunity to go and get additional credits at institutions of higher education, unless we're providing the same class here. So in these classes, you can already see in the list, the ones that were approved or not approved, if it's not approved means we already offer similar class here.
Because I got a question, because I've been tracking this. I think this is a wonderful thing. I got no complaints about that. I only know that through M A T C and to get those credits, the teacher had to have like 2,000 hours of whatever to, in the subject to be qualified to be at a, at that level of a teacher for college and for the high school kids.
If they're, and I think what you're talking about is a little different than this.
Okay.
We have, there are certain, there are courses.
Yes.
That you can teach at the high school level.
Yes.
In which you can get a transcribed credit. But to get a transcribed credit, then there has to be a certain amount of expertise. I don't remember how many hours here. This is, they're actually going to the institution to take the class.
They are going there, then. I didn't know if they're doing it in-house.
No, these are actually, they're going, you know. At least that's my belief, because I'm.
Either to Madison College or to UW.
Yeah, I'm not aware that any of these will be taught in-house because if it is, you'd have to be an instructor for the university.
Yeah.
So most of these are where you leave.
I didn't know how we were doing that.
Yeah.
I was just trying to, because I've been, after, this is my dream. This is the best thing that could ever happen to anybody. I think this is wonderful, but my, my concern was just that. Thank you.
So this is an easy one for you.
Absolutely. I'll move to approve the three early college credit and 15 Start New College Now applicants for the spring of 2022.
I second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Moving on, action on second reading and adoption of policy.
These are ones, we didn't have time at our last meeting between the regular meeting and the annual meeting. So these were all of the changes that were recommended by NEOLAs to make with our current policies, that are NEOLAs policies. So the vast majority are what I'll call smaller changes. There are several that were legally changed by their attorneys to meet situations within the state. But my recommendation would be to, you know, accept the recommendations of the NEOLAs policies. If there is something you wanted to pull, you, you obviously have the right to pull any policy you'd like.
Discussion? Christine? You have anything?
No, except that, are we, I'm sorry, I'm confused about the first reading and the second reading, and I want to make sure that we have time to do the second reading. So if we make a motion that we.
Well, the, the first reading is to, you know, is to give everybody the opportunity to take a look in terms of if there's any changes. The second reading is where if you approve it, then the changes are made and it goes into the policy handbook. But you can pull any policy to have additional readings. But if it were approved, then these changes will be made and updated and put into the policies that are on our website.
Correct. Did that, does that address your concern, Christine?
Slightly. Well, if someone wants to go ahead and make a motion, I'm.
Anyone else have any discussion before we make a motion? Otherwise, I would move to approve the policy changes as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Action on second reading and adoption of policy 0141.1, Student Representation at Board Meetings.
All right, this is one that we have worked on for the last couple, and we made some modifications at the end of our last meeting. And basically, the modification that we made since the last meeting was the last sentence that reads, "The school board shall annually approve the selection process established by the high school administration and the student council." So part of this you add that, you know, there's going to be a process selected in which the student representative to the board would come. And now what you've added is that, in this case, Jeff Finsted would come to you on an annual basis and would say, here is how we are selecting the representatives that will come to the board as student representatives. And then the board would say, yes, we like that, that's approved. And then he would follow through. Or you would say, no, we don't like that. And you'd want him to come back with an alternative plan, in which then he would come back with an alternative plan and tell the plan that he presented and the plan that you approved were the same. And then he would use that, and this is an annual basis so that, you know, it could be the same one every year, but it could be a process that changed. But in the end, you approve the process that the high school principal will use in selecting the representatives. And the student council's always been, you know, the student arm. So it's basically the principal and the student council come up with a process to select student representatives, and you will decide whether or not that meets your needs. And if you do, they'll select it and you'll have student representatives at the meeting.
All right. Anybody else need further clarification?
I think this is a great idea. This is, I think, we were really following Christine's suggestion, and I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
I really like this.
Yep.
So I'll make the motion. I move to approve policy 0141.1, Student Representation at Board Meetings as Presented and Modified.
Thank you. Bruce?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next is discussion and possible action on first reading of policy 1230, Responsibilities of the District Administrator.
Okay, so what I have done is, Christine had went through several of the various job descriptions, had written some language to consider. I have taken what she has put in, what I had put in, and tried to put that into a single document, which is policy 1230, Responsibility of the District Administrator. Starts out with the job goal, the qualifications, the purpose of the job, and then breaks the position responsibilities into policy and contract administration, educational program activities, fiscal management, operation, community relations, school board relations, professional growth. And then my favorite is other any duties as assigned.
The catch-all, that's a beauty.
So what it is, is what my goal is, is that at least by the, if not this meeting, I tried to capture the changes. So if it does and you approve it, that would be great. If you want some additional changes, fine. But if we could have it approved by the 15th, so that, that way when we post the job, there's a up-to-date job description the candidates can look at.
Any discussion?
Well, I personally would like a little bit more time with it, not a ton of time. So I, I was wondering if maybe we could table approving this until we, I, I don't know if anyone else feels this way, but has just one more chance to go through this.
I've got no problem with that. Anybody else?
I think, Christine, you and, and Dr. Anderson have done a great job for this myself.
Yep.
I really like what you've written.
And, and as long as we can get something, you know, before the 15th. I don't, I don't see the downside.
I think he needs this, though, to.
So what we'll do is we'll put it on for the, the second reading and approval at the 15th. So if there's anything additional that you would like changed, if you can get it to me, then I will make those modifications. So then the 15th, you can vote to approve whatever it is at the time. And then what we'll do is, I can then use that to, using it in posting.
Are you, are you sure that's adequate?
Yep.
You don't need it?
It's only, once you approve it, it's simply, you know, basically a cut and paste to the form. So that won't take me, if we have it approved, it doesn't take me anything at all.
Now, let's, let's put it on the next agenda then, as a second reading and approval. Isn't that what we do?
Yep.
Okay, we've got some. Angie?
I'm sorry, do we, do we need action on first reading, though? Approval of first reading? So then we can make it for second reading and adoption?
Do we need to make a motion to table it until the next meeting? Or do we just not act on it?
I don't think you need action on the first reading.
You don't need action, okay.
Because simply is, would, you're being presented, so you have the, the time to take a look at it. You are going to need action for approval.
Okay, all right. Well, that brings us down to board events and district events.
I thought it perhaps was adjournment.
Otherwise, I think that's it, isn't it?
Yep.
I would look for a motion to adjourn in that case.
I'll make that.
Bruce?
I'll second.
Harlan? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. We are adjourned and thank you, one and all. Thank you, Christine, for joining in, and we'll see you when you get back.